Thank you for joining us this evening in regular scheduled council meeting in the Park City City Council on May 14, 2019 at 7:00 PM. Deed, would you call the roll?
John Lynn Herr.
Here.
George Glover.
Here.
Ben Salsetta.
Here.
Melvin Kerr.
Here.
Tom Jones.
Here.
George Capps.
Here.
Brandy Bailey.
Here.
Jim Schrader. Mr. Mayor, you have a quorum.
Okay. Tonight Pastor Bill Coons is going to lead in the invocation and Councilmember Melvin Kerr is going to lead in the pledge. If everybody please stand.
Dear Heavenly Father, we come before you this evening. Father, I lift the mayor before you. I lift the council members before you. Father, may they seek wisdom from you, wisdom that cannot fail. Father, may they do the work that was entrusted to them by the citizens of Park City and may they do it well. Give them a good meeting tonight in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. First item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Is John?
I don't know of any changes, so I'll make a motion. We approve the agenda as published.
And Brandy?
Second.
Okay, got a motion and a second, not seeing any further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes seven zero. Tonight we have, under awards and presentations, we have a proclamation proclaiming May 12 through the 18th, 2019 as Police Week. Dana?
Thank you, Mayor, Manon, and Council. And as the mayor has adequately said, National Police Week is May 12 through the 18th this year. It's with great honor and pride that we recognize the law enforcement professionals in our city. And first, I would like to recognize those who are serving on our council. I'd like to recognize Councilman George Capps, our retired chief of police, and we thank him for his service, and Councilman John Lanier, who is a lieutenant with the Kansas Highway Patrol. So we thank all those who have served and we're proud to recognize our current officers. So if you would look at the screen, you will see a video. And this is our current police department and what it looks like under the leadership of Chief Boston. We have seventeen full-time certified, full-time police officers, two reserve officers, three approved code enforcement officers, and two civilian employees. And there will be a short video and you will see in that, you see, these are our officers at work. They are the people who keep us safe. They are the people who will be there in some of the most difficult times of our lives and they celebrate with us. You can see that they are celebrating with us. They're true community police officers and we very much appreciate that. So in their honor this evening, we have a proclamation. More than a million law enforcement officers serving communities across the United States, including the dedicated members of our Park City Police Department. Since the first recorded law enforcement officer death in 1791, nearly 24,000 law enforcement officers in the United States have made the ultimate sacrifice and have been killed in the line of duty. Whereas, in 1962, President John F. Kennedy designated May 15th as Peace Officers Memorial Day and the week in which it falls as National Police Week. And whereas, the city of Park City wishes to honor the service and sacrifice of law enforcement officers killed in the line of duty by flying the United States and Kansas flags at half-staff on May 15th, 2019. And whereas, the Park City City Council formally designates May 12 through the 18th of 2019 as Police Week in Park City, Kansas, to publicly salute the service of law enforcement officers in our community and in communities across the nation. The Honorable Ray Mann, Mayor of the City of Park City, Kansas, on behalf of the City Council has hereby proclaimed May 12 through the 18th of 2019 as Park City Police Week and encourages all residents to join in the special observance. And I would say, thank you.
Thank you. It's a fine-looking group of men and women that we have on our screen. I'd accept a motion from the council. Ben?
Sure, I'd like to make a motion here that we approve the proclamation proclaiming May 12 through 18th of 2019 Park City Police Week and also say thank you for all your service.
And Tom?
I would second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, not seeing any further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that passes seven zero. Thank you very much. That brings us to public forum. And I didn't have anybody bring my sheets. Dana, could you run back and see if... Okay, we didn't have anybody sign up for public forum this evening, so we'll go ahead and move to staff reports and we'll hear from our city administrator, Sean Fox. Sean?
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Just two brief items tonight. First is the new maintenance building. Later on tonight on the agenda, there is an item regarding the new maintenance building as far as needed updates, but I wanted to build, update you on the construction status itself. Understandably, rain over the past couple of weeks has delayed the completion of the building. They weren't able to pour the concrete front apron until earlier today, which is a good deal because they had originally thought it'd be Friday. And that will take approximately five to seven days for the concrete fully to cure. And nobody would thought that just because of the rain, the building's been weathered in for the past couple of weeks that that would delay, but it was such a mud pit out in front that they couldn't even really get supplies in there as far as sheet rock and everything else. So they're about a week behind as far as that's concerned as well. Again, our staff is ready to go as soon as we get ownership of the building and it's only going to take them a couple of days. I've talked with the purchaser, the individual buying the older maintenance building from us, and they still want to go through with closing on Friday. And then he's agreed to lease it back to us for the duration, however long it may be, and we're expecting no more than about a week. So closing should happen this Friday at nine o'clock. And then secondly, I'd like to offer kudos to both Ted Wallinger, Shane Alexander, and Randy Browning of our own police department. Yesterday, they participated with Cedric County Sheriff's Department conducting search and rescue training outside Clearwater, Kansas, using drones. They were out there most of the day. They spent a lot of the time, the first half of the day, right next to the high school looking for the pool noodles. They're blue and pink, symbolizing or representing a lost child hiding up under a tree or... And it was pretty tough looking at the shade, but they were out there flying their drones and then later on, they went to a chemical plant and did some flying around there, so much that they were able to obtain their certificate of authorization from the FAA. So basically, they will have approval or authority to fly their drones anywhere within the county. So they're certified. So kudos to them. That's it, sir.
Awesome. Does anybody have any questions for Sean? Not seeing any. We'll move on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion? John?
Motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
And Brandy?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that passes seven zero. That brings us to item A, under new business, which is considered the Park City Youth Baseball Financial Report. And the financial report was in your packet. And if any council member has any questions, Mr. Martin's here, he can answer those for us. Otherwise, we just need a motion to receive and file that. John?
I don't have any questions. I would just make a motion, we receive and file.
Okay. And Brandy?
Here.
Okay, we got a motion and a second, not seeing any discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes seven zero. That brings us to item B, which is consider appointments to the Board of Examiners and Appeals. Deed, did you have anything you wanted to say on this? It's pretty self-explanatory.
I think I'm good.
Okay. So the next few items that we have on the agenda are simply just reappointments and appointments to our different boards and committees. Those names and everything are listed below. Does anybody have any questions about the Board of Examiners or Appeals? Is there a motion from the council? John?
I'd make a motion that we appoint the named individuals, Max Christiansen, Darrell LaFue, Tim Hendricks. Sorry, let me back up a little bit and I'm going to put the terms in.
So Max Christiansen and Darrell LaFue, their terms would end May of 2020.
John Grisham and Tim Hendricks, terms would end May of 2021. Mark Brand and Walter Rooney, terms would end May of 2022. Make a motion that we approve them to the Board of Examiners and Appeals with said dates.
Okay. And Tom?
I'm going to second it.
Okay. Ben, did you have a question?
Yeah, I just had a real quick question just for clear, help me understand. On the first couple, those are just a one-year appointment then or...
Yeah, the goal is you always have your terms staggered so you don't have this exit or a huge entrance.
So this is, is this a new board or...
Some of them are new, some of them are reappointments.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Okay. Tom?
Well, I just got a question on how some of these people found out about this and volunteered to be on it.
That would be through our building inspector.
Okay.
He will help us out. He wants to make sure we got a good diversity of people and he's been able to pool together some wide backgrounds.
I recognize several names on here, but I haven't seen them out here doing anything. I didn't know. Okay.
Okay. We have a motion and a second, not seeing any further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that passes seven zero. And that brings us to item C, which is consider the Appointment to Convention and Tourism Board. Everybody remembers Jack. Jack during his hiatus from us for a while, had to resign from the CNT and I told him that we'd love to have him back on and he would like the opportunity to serve there again. John?
Again, I would make a motion under item C that we approve the appointment of Jack Woodson to the Convention and Tourism Board, term ending January of 2021.
And George?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, not seeing any further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes seven zero. Thank you, Jack, for continuing to serve. We appreciate it.
Would he be in a probationary period for a little while while he learns stuff?
That brings us to item D, which is consider appointments to the Planning Commission and Board of Zoning and Appeals. And just as the other ones, you can see that most of those are reappointments and this is just some housekeeping that we need to do to keep our boards and our information correct. Is there a recommendation from the council? Ben?
I'd go ahead and make a motion to approve the appointment of Harry Woodson, T. Michael Smith, and Chris Lewis with the term ending May 2021, and Susan Gaultier, Carol Reed, Gerald Klocke, and Milo Sweet with the term ending May 2022 to the Planning Commission Board of Zoning Appeals.
And Brandy?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, not seeing any further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that passes seven zero. That brings us to item E, which is consider appointments to the Library Board. Same thing, just housekeeping and making sure we have everything correct with our current people that serve. John?
I'd make a motion that we approve the appointment of Diane Kiltz-Kristin Wokey with a term ending of 2021, Linda Holsey and Judy Taldo with a term ending of April 2022, and Jason Braybender and Louise Huddleston with a term ending 2023 to the Library Board.
George?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, not seeing any further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes seven zero. I now call item, Agenda Item 8F, which is Case Number Z, 2019-02. This is for a rezoning amendment requesting a change from the present L1 Light Industrial District to L2 Heavy Industrial District. Before we proceed, I'll ask the council members if any of them intend to disqualify themselves from discussing and voting on this case because they may have conflicts of interest or a particular bias in this matter. Not seeing any. Has the city clerk received any protest petitions in the case?
I have not.
I now ask the council members if they have all received the copies of the unapproved minutes of the Planning Commission from April 15, 2019, which summarizes the hearing on this case.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. After the Assistant City Administrator's report, I will ask the applicant and the public who may wish to speak to this item. I now call on Dana Walden to provide us with a brief background on this report.
Thank you, Mayor, Manon, and Council. This is in regard to the property at 5961 North Broadway. The owner there filed a zone change application seeking to unify the zoning. It was a unique situation here in the city where it's the same property, but it was zoned in two different zones. It was platted, when it was platted, it had I2 Heavy Industrial on the east portion and I1 Light Industrial on the west portion. Unifying the zone would be beneficial both to the owner and to the city as well. It's consistent with the city's comprehensive plan. The matter was put in front of the Planning Commission at its April meeting. After hearing from the applicant, the staff, and the public, the Planning Commission considered the findings of fact that are suggested in the golden case by the Kansas Supreme Court. The Planning Commission adopted the findings of fact and this was consistent with granting the zoning change. There have been no protest positions that has been filed in this zone change application. It would be a benefit to any prospective property owner because it's very confusing to have two different zones that they would have to comply with as far as what is on the property itself. And the staff is recommending that the governing body approve the findings of fact that were adopted by the Planning Commission and adopt the ordinance that implements this zoning, the zoning change, which is included in your packet.
Does the applicant wish to present any new information? No? Are there any questions to the applicant from the council? Does anyone from the public wish to respond to the applicant's information or provide any new information not presented at the public hearing held by the Planning Commission? Okay. Assuming the council has received all the information they need on this, I will outline the choices provided under state statutes for council action. First, by a majority vote, move to adopt the findings and factors of the recommendation of the Planning Commission on Case Number Z, 2017-01, and approve the ordinance. Or two, by a two-thirds majority vote, move to override the Planning Commission's recommendation, describe in detail the finding and factors supporting the motion, and attach the conditions, if any, and approve the ordinance. Our third option is by a majority vote, move to return the recommendation to the Planning Commission for further consideration at its next regular meeting with a statement specifying the bias for the council's failure to approve or disapprove the recommendation. Ben?
Sure, I'd go ahead and make a motion that we adopt the findings and facts and recommendation of the Planning Commission on Case Z, 2019-02, and to approve ordinance number 1061-2019.
Melvin?
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, not seeing any further discussion. Deed, would you call the roll?
John Lynn Herr.
Aye.
George Glover.
Aye.
Ben Salsetta.
Aye.
Melvin Kerr.
Aye.
Tom Jones.
Aye.
George Capps.
Aye.
Brandy Bailey.
Aye.
Jim Schrader.
And that passes seven zero. And that brings us to item F, which is consider Case Number Z, 2019-02, a rezoning amendment from the I1 Light Industrial District to I2 Heavy Industrial District at 5961 North Broadway. Once again, I'll ask the council...
Mayor?
I think it's a special use, is next.
G.
Oh, I did, I read that wrong. Okay, we'll try again. I now call Agenda Item 8G, which is Case Number SU, 2019-01. This is the application for the establishment of the auto salvage as a special use in the I2 Heavy Industrial District. Before we'll proceed, I'll ask the council members if any of them tend to disqualify themselves from discussing or voting on this because they have a particular interest or bias in this case. Has the city clerk received any petitions or protests on the case?
I have not.
Okay. I now ask the council members if they have all received the copies of the unapproved minutes of the Planning Commission from April 15, 2019, which summarizes the hearing on this case.
Yes.
I now call on our Assistant City Administrator, Dana Walden, to provide us with a brief background and a report on the case.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Once again, this is the same property as the previous case, which is located at 5961 North Broadway. The applicant applied for a special use permit, which would allow the establishment of salvage yard on this property, which is zoned I2 Heavy Industrial. The application was considered by the Planning Commission at the April meeting. There was a hearing and the applicant and the public and the Planning Commission then considered the suggested findings that were set out in the golden case with the Supreme Court of Kansas. They adopted the findings that support the grant of such a special use under certain conditions. Those conditions are outlined in the ordinance that is included and you can also see how the meeting minutes were at the Planning Commission. The staff recommends approval of the Planning Commission's finding of fact and adoption of the ordinance granting the special use, subject to compliance with the conditions that are set out in this ordinance.
Okay. Just says item F. The council has three options and I won't read those, through those again. I think everybody understands those three choices that the council has. John?
I'd make a motion that we approve special use permit SU, 2019-01, to establish auto salvage yard at 5961 North Broadway.
And George?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Tom?
I just have a question and I've read in the minutes that's there. It says there's going to be fenced screening, so there will be something, I assume, at least like what we have around the auto auction?
Dana?
Yes.
At minimum?
Yes, that would be the appropriate type of screening. It is outlined as far as how high it has to be, how far back it has to be set, and it has to comply with the Salvage Yard Beautification Act, which essentially is going to mean that you're not going to be able to see any of the salvage that's inside that fenced area.
I just want that...
Can't go over it.
Right.
Can't be seen from the street.
I'd like to get that into the dialogue tonight. And then the other thing I got is that's an EPA cleanup area and containment. We've got provisions for that?
What is put into place is that any, any location where there's any type of a vehicle that would be on that property, it has to be, there has to be the appropriate surface underneath it and there also has to be containment where any spillage would be contained in the appropriate manner. And it will have to comply with a plan that will be approved by the fire department and also by our city building inspector as well.
Okay. Well, that's not new because that's been, was a salvage yard 60 years ago, so it's kind of like went away and now it's coming back. So I just want to get this in the record that we've discussed those two areas.
Yes, and the important thing is that it previously was a salvage yard, but it lost the license for that. And so in order to become a salvage yard once again, there will have to be that license and then there will have to be compliance with the things that we've set out in this ordinance as well.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
John?
I just want to follow up on my motion that I probably need to specify that this was in the I2 Heavy Industrial District and I'm also asking to approve ordinance number 1062-2019.
Okay. George?
I'll second that motion.
Okay. We got a motion and a second, not seeing any further discussion. Deed, would you call the roll?
John Lynn Herr.
Aye.
George Glover.
Aye.
Ben Salsetta.
Aye.
Melvin Kerr.
Aye.
Tom Jones.
Aye.
George Capps.
Aye.
Brandy Bailey.
Aye.
Jim Schrader.
And that ordinance passes seven zero. That brings us to item H, which is the election of the council president. This is something typically we do in May, if you guys noticed in this. I've got this changed up to January so it more reflect with the elections and how that works. I just think it'd make more sense that when we have a changing of the guard, that maybe we go ahead and also do that at the same time with the council president. Should, should that person be not reelected, it would just be a seamless thing versus having to. John?
I would make a motion to appoint Brandy Bailey as the council president. I feel like she's served us really well over the last year and was very active in the search for the new city administrator and I think she would do us well and it's her shot.
Tom?
John took my nomination away from me. I second it.
Okay. Melvin?
I nominate Ben Seseo for council president.
Okay. Ben?
I was going to make a nomination, but... And I'm not going to second my own.
Okay. George?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to nominate Melvin Kerr as council president.
We got a lot of different stuff going on here. So the first one is for Brandy. And that was moved by John and seconded by Tom. Doug, what's the proper etiquette for continuing on here?
I could withdraw my second and we could have a list and vote if you want to do that.
I guess I would ask this, would each one need a second though before, or any nomination would work? Or do you need a second on the nomination?
I'm sorry, I wasn't listening closely enough. Yes, you need a second to the nomination before it's a valid nomination.
Right. So we have a motion and a second. Would we vote on the first one and then if there wasn't enough votes to pass, then we would go back and take a second nomination? Would that be the appropriate way, Doug?
Yeah, but... No, well, no, you have, you have a slate. This is not like a regular motion that I can see. You have a slate of candidates and so you have somebody nominated and then a second for the nomination and then you don't vote on that. That person is then one of the people that will be voted on.
Okay. All right.
But you, but I believe you need a second to the nomination before you, and then there's a motion to close the nominations at some point.
Okay. Melvin made a motion for Tom, or I mean for Ben. Is there a second for Ben? George?
I made a motion for Melvin.
Okay. George Capps?
Well, I'm going to do a second, but I'm not sure here I'm seconding. I just want to cut through the tape here.
There's two options, Ben or Melvin right now.
I would do a second on both of them for the sake of argument so we can move on.
All right. Ben?
Can I withdraw my nomination?
You can say you're not interested.
You can decline it.
Okay, I will decline.
Okay. All right. So right now, we have a motion for Brandy and Melvin. So all those in favor of Brandy signify by raising your hand. Okay, so that would be four, three. And all those in favor of Melvin, that would be three, four. So that, Brandy, you're our next council president through January. Congratulations.
Thank you.
I would like to say in the past, we've just recommended somebody to be the president and when you got the list and we voted, we didn't do the second thing. So I figured it out tonight.
We'll see if we can clear some stuff up by next January. All right. So we'll move on to item I, which is consider a proposal from Ranson City Code, Financial City Code, Financial LLC, for the creation and codification of the City of Park City's municipal code. Sean?
Yes, sir. Codification of ordinances provides a logical, organized code of law for efficient administration of governmental affairs. of governmental affairs and ease of use by the constituents. Attached is a proposal from Ranson City Code for the development and comprehensive code, including organization and modernization of our existing ordinances and resolutions. Based on its initial fee on population, Park City's population would appear to justify a $6,000 initial upfront fee, but because of the city code has offered us a reduced proposed cost of $4,000 based on the condition of our current code. The initial fee includes legal review, revising, updating, formatting for online, and then providing copies of the code online and ten in-print copies for staff to utilize. City Code would then provide a memorandum of recommendations and comments based on their legal review and best practices of other Kansas municipalities, and that would give staff in the council the opportunity to review the draft and direct provisions prior to its formal adoption by the council. Going forward, on an annual basis, there is a fee after adoption of approximately $1,500 each year, and that's for the maintenance and update and adding new ordinances, which is usually updated online within 48 hours after council approves an ordinance. The updated paper copy code books or supplements are provided at the end of each year. The online code would not only be resident on ParkCityKSCityCode.net, but also we would tie it to our own city website, so that way people could get on there and track and see what's going on as far as codes. Right now, my initial impressions, having gone through most of the codes, somebody did a tremendous job back in 2006 and scanned a tremendous amount of documents into Laserfish. So I think it's fair to say that we probably have 95% of all the ordinances dating back to the 80s. But a lot of those are just scanned into Laserfish, and that's not a readily accessible program for council members or constituents. But this way, it would make it to where links on the webpage are hyperlink, so if you want to type in fences and find out everything in the city code as far as fences, you just type that in there, and it'll tell you the six different places our code references it. If you have questions, I sat down with the city attorney as well to get his opinions and thoughts on it, and I'm certain he could offer you some comments as well. But I think it's a great program and would recommend the proposal be authorized or approved and authorize the mayor to execute a contract with Ranson City Code in the amount not to exceed $6,000.
Doug, did you--
$6,500, excuse me.
Did you have anything you want to tag on this?
I just would second everything that Sean said. I think it's-- as we go forward and we're more and more into the digital age, I just think it's critical that we have our code as up-to-date as possible on our website and accessible. Right now, it's accessible, but you know, an example, I guess, is the next item on the agenda. I'm forever finding little tweaks that I have to make in things that have become outdated or need corrected, and those don't always make it into a new book or the code on the website. And Ranson would help us do that. I'm not able to do that, and so this would be extraordinarily valuable to the city.
Okay. Tom?
I was going to make a motion that we move to approve the proposal and authorize the mayor to execute a contract between City Code Financial LLC and the City of Park City, not to exceed $6,500 for the creation and codification of the City of Park City's Municipal Code. Excuse me.
Okay. Ben?
I was going to say that I would second this and will comment just or comment on that. Sean came out Saturday to our coffee event and did a great job of explaining it to those that had questions on this, and just the need for really codifying these ordinances is so important for us moving forward. So I'm a big supporter of what our city administrator's doing here.
Brandy?
I just want to say I like the idea of having the second, well, having another set of legal eyes on it to legally review it, make sure we're doing the best practices, and looking at their clients that they have in the state in Kansas, that's really impressive. So I really like this idea and getting it all in one spot.
And if I could say, I think Ranson has done a good job for us as a financial advisor, and so when we met with them here a couple weeks ago, I was very impressed and found out that they offered this service, because it's something I'd already talked with Dee and Dana about. Down south, I was used to accompany Franklin Legal. And just so you know, on the average basis, their renewal fee is somewhere around $4,800 to $5,000. So when I saw this initial fee, that's when I went, this is pretty good. And yes, it's a very impressive list of the cities that they do represent in the state, so.
And it makes it easier for the citizens to look stuff up, because currently, when you try to find something, it's near impossible, and we have to tie up staff to call them and ask them, hey, can you tell me about fences? So it's an excellent idea. We got a motion and a second, not seeing any further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes seven zero. That brings us to item J, which is consider an ordinance amending the municipal code to prohibit cereal malt beverages sales on Easter Sunday. Doug?
Lieutenant-- sale hours, and we approved that several years ago. Lieutenant Capps took that and, as he often does, kind of checked on it for me and found out that our code wasn't correct. And when he came back, he had the state statute to show me. And so we need to add in there that there is a prohibition against Sunday sales of cereal malt beverage and beer in our city on Easter Sunday. That's the only Sunday of the year. Every other Sunday, they can sell the hours that you see in the ordinance, but we need to add that. That's added in subsection C of the ordinance that you have in front of you, and I would ask that you adopt the ordinance.
Okay. Ben?
I'd go ahead and make a motion that we approve ordinance number 1063-2019, amending section 3-214 of the Municipal Code of the City of Park City, Kansas pertaining to business regulations for cereal malt beverage licenses and repealing the original of said section 3-214.
Okay. George?
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second, not seeing any further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Mr. Mayor? We need a roll call.
Sorry. Dee, would you call the roll?
John Lynn Harris?
Aye.
George Glover?
Aye.
Ben Salsetta?
Aye.
Melvin Kerr?
Aye.
Tom Jones?
Aye.
George Capps?
Aye.
Brandy Bailey?
Aye.
Jim Schrader.
And that ordinance passes seven zero. That brings us to item K, which is consider additional expenditures for the new maintenance building located at 227 West 61st Street North. Sean?
Yes, sir. As briefed back on April 23, council approved $394,056 for the construction of the new maintenance building back in September of 2018, and had an original contract price of $15,000 less than the first number. Up to date, two change orders have been approved, resulting in an overall net credit of $18,006.5. As construction nears completion, staff is requesting approval of an additional $61,771 for items not contained in the original contract or approved by council. There's a listing of five different items there. I will let you know as far as paving, where it talks about $35,416. The concrete apron portion of it, that's what I passed on originally today, that that has already been approved, and that was presented to the council last time and approved by the mayor and myself going forward, because that needed to be concrete. It's the front driveway. But as far as the additional paving around the side of the building, that has not been approved by anybody as of yet. So there's $400 to complete the survey. The fencing is an estimate based on $10 linear foot, and this would provide a new mechanical motorized gate at the front entrance getting onto Prospect Road, and it would completely fence in all of Sherwood as well as the new maintenance building. We have gotten approval from CCUA to tap the electrical off of their pump house, which is right at the entrance, so the gate would run off of that. A 15,000-pound two-post lift, there's a couple different estimates in there. A couple of them should have given you a heart attack, as they were upwards of $20,000, and that was for two lifts at the time. Working with our staff, we can get by with one lift currently, and we have the skills and the capabilities to install that lift ourselves. So we have found a lift that we can order, free shipping, for about $42.50, and then I think I threw on about $500 just for installation, make certain that we had the appropriate bolts and everything to secure that. So that's $47.50 for the 15,000-pound lift. And then finally, internet and security. There's a whole separate staff summary sheet that was provided by Ted that kind of talks about all the different expenditures, and again, kudos to Ted for doing this. He'd gone out and gotten a couple different bids, rather expensive, but he's figured out that he can do a lot of the work himself and do that. One of the best things about the proposal that he's outlined is a point-to-zoom camera on the corner of the building that will also provide security for Sherwood. So that way, right now, the cameras at Sherwood are fixed cameras and not always pointed at the right direction that we need them to be. So by approving this, you'd have increased security over at the Sherwood facility in addition to the new maintenance building. So if you take into consideration the $15,000 that council had originally approved above contract price and the $18,000 in credit change that we have on file, that still leaves an unbudgeted amount of $28,706, but the total ask for approval of additional items is $61,771.
Okay. Can you just touch base where the $28,000 would come from? I think we all know. Dee?
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you were asking him. MTBE fund.
Yeah. So which is where we were pulling for the construction of the building as well. Ben?
Do we know where that would leave us at taking out this additional money as far as in the MTBE fund?
I'm sorry, I didn't catch your question.
What the balance would be if we're pulling out this amount?
I'm sorry, I do not have that.
Tom?
I was going to make a motion that we approve to move additional expenditures to the amount of $61,771 for new maintenance building located at 227 West 61st Street, and that that come from MTBE funds.
Brandy?
Second.
Okay. Got a motion and a second, not seeing any further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Did somebody say no?
No. Sorry.
Okay. And that motion passes six one. That brings us to consider the 2020 budget calendar. Dee?
You should all have a copy of our proposed 2020 budget calendar in your packet. The dates have been set to comply with August 25 deadline to submit it to the county, and the county then boards it on to the state. In addition to the regular council meetings that we have noted on that calendar, there's also proposed two special meetings. The first one would be a work session on June 18. That's a Tuesday at 6 o'clock, and the purpose of that meeting would be to have our department heads come, and they could present to you different things that they're doing this year and their budgets that you might be interested in, and also give you the ability to ask them questions. The second proposed date would be August 6, 7 p.m., and again, that's a Tuesday, and that would be for the budget hearing and adoption. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to respond.
So we've kind of hit the whirlwind of the budget season, and we want to try to lay out and map out kind of what the plan is, so we can have these meetings, everybody being well aware of when they are, so that we can get through this season in a timely event and have everything wrapped up when it's time to get to that August 6 meeting. Ben?
I'd make a motion to approve the 2020 budget calendar.
And Brandy?
I second with a comment. I just want to say I appreciate bringing in the department heads to this budget workshop, so that way we can hear from them directly. So thank you.
Okay. We have a motion and a second, not seeing any further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes seven zero. That brings us to governing body reports, and we'll start with our new council president, Brandy.
First, I just have, I just want to mention the Fourth of July is getting into full swing. We have our website up and going. It's ParkCityKS4th.com. You can register for a parade entry there. You can register for the Fourth of July pageant on that site as well. And then we have a new phone number for, it'll have, they're working on getting the message up and going, but that number will be 316-847-7444. So please go take a look and sign up to participate in the Fourth of July events.
Okay. George?
I don't have anything.
Tom?
I'm going to try to give the Heights student an attaboy here. We've got a junior over at Heights that there was an article in Ark Valley News back in March that he had placed real high in the state on competition for computer service and troubleshooting, and then also new work administration and maintenance. And Heights is one of the schools in the country, there's 1,800 schools that belong to this. It's Business Professionals of America, nation's leading career and technical student organization pursuing careers in business management, information technicians, financial accounting, office administration, and other business fields. There's 45,000 members. Well, Doyle Sheridan went to the Nationals and took first place in network administration and using Microsoft systems. He took fifth in PC servicing and troubleshooting, and he took 19th in information and technology. So I just wanted to bring to the attention that we've got a kid here in Park City that's gone out and done some good things nationally. Way to go, Doyle, or Sheridan. Doyle's his last name. I'm having trouble with that, so anyway. But Sheridan Doyle, attaboy.
All right. Thanks, Tom. Melvin?
I have nothing.
Ben?
So I did want to just say quickly here, thank you to the Park City Police Department again for all that you do. I've heard just around, not just around town, but even our surrounding communities, the great work that the Park City Police Department does and the reputation that they have, and so that's reflective of the work that our chief does and then all those that are on the leadership there and with our officers. So thank you to each one of you that put your life on the line each day for us. And I missed the last meeting due to family issue, but I wanted to say thank you to our Public Works men that were out the night we had the water line breaks there, two breaks in one night there. They were out there working hard and dealing with everything, and I just want to say thank you for all the hard work that you all put into making our city great.
Thanks, Ben. George?
Yeah, we're doing our fishing touches on the 11th Annual Park City Fishing Derby. There were a lot of fish caught this past weekend, a lot of folks fishing. I appreciate the hard work that the parks, the grass is mowed beautifully. They cut it this morning, so I appreciate that. So everyone come out and enjoy that. We're looking forward to that. Again, it's June 15 from 9:11 at Chisholm Point Pond on North Grove. Thank you.
All right. John?
I have nothing personally, but the IT folks from the city asked me to give them a plug for the YouTube channel, the Park City, Kansas YouTube channel on YouTube, to if some more people would go to that and give it a like.
All right.
So that's your tech speed. So that's it. Make a motion, we adjourn.
I'm going to second that.
And we got a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes seven zero. Thank you.